Welcome to the North Burn Water District Board, Special Board of Directors Meeting to review the rate study, water rate study consultancy that we've arranged. First order of business is to, this is open time, so we have wonderful, a senior group of many people from the public here tonight. Does anyone in the audience have any agenda items that we're not going to be discussing tonight that they'd like to bring out? And we want to hear. Okay? We'll close open time and we'll move to Agenda Item Three, which is the Nevada Water Rate Study Workshop. And with that, I'd like to introduce the General Manager of North Burn Water District, Drew McIntyre. Drew?
Okay, thank you. So I want to just give a little bit of a history before we get into the actual presentation for our rate study consultant. About a year ago, the district entered in an agreement with Hildebrand Consulting to prepare a comprehensive water rate study. And this water rate study by Hildebrand, he has experience doing this work. Some of the other clients have been San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, the cities of Santa Rosa, Healdsburg, and the city of Davis, just to name a few. The objective of the water rate study is to develop water rates that are fair and equitable and to ensure that the district's water rates comply with California state law commonly referred to as Proposition 218. In order to maintain compliance with this proposition, the rate structure should generate revenue from each class of customers in proportion to the cost to serve each customer. So a little discussion about the format here, the workshop. So Mark Hildebrand, who I will introduce in a minute, will be providing a presentation and lead the discussion and go over the rate-setting process, the rate study framework, and the rate structure redesign. A second workshop, if needed, is two weeks from tonight, on February 25th. Upon completion of the workshops, the board will hear this rate study again at the March 3 meeting. At that point in time, the board will be asked to accept the rate study and provide direction to staff on preparing a Prop. 218 notice to the public on the proposed revenue increase and updated rate structure. Then a final hearing on approval of that would be in June. So you can see through this process, over the next few months, that we're starting off with the workshops first, to try and get as much input from the public as possible. And then that will ultimately lead to a final approval of the rates, a new rate structure, as I indicated before, the June 16 meeting is a public hearing. Couple other things I'd like to mention, obviously, if you haven't figured it out yet, we are videographing tonight's workshop, so that if folks are not able to attend, we will load that on our website, and so people will be able to see the presentation at the convenience of their home at a later date. So I'd like to thank our videographers for that. I'd like to introduce our legal counsel. We have Doug Cody here to mediate right, and a new gentleman with the firm, Morgan, bigger staff, Morgan, welcome. And Martin Rousch with our PR, public relations consultants in the audience as well. I want to talk a little bit about the outreach that we've done to date. Just starting back in November of last year, we have our Fall Waterline Newsletter. We sent that out to all of our customers, and in that Waterline Newsletter, we gave a notice about this work on the water rate study and the schedule, including this workshop tonight. We also, on our homepage on our website, we noticed this back in November with the schedule. And starting in December through January, we put individual notices on all of our bills to our customers regarding our work on the rate study and these key meeting dates. And we did, we've had two articles in the IJ in February and one quarter-page ad in the Marin IJ in February as well. And then recently, a couple of weeks ago, we sent out an e-blast. We have about 8,000 customers that we have emails for, and we sent out an e-blast notice about the workshop to those 8,000 customers. And was happy to see that we, in the analytics, we had about 3,300 customers actually click on the link to the webpage. And so more and more, our communication electronically is becoming very effective as far as trying to get the word out to our customers. You're going to see in the presentation tonight that Mark Hildebrand will go over some rate impacts for the typical customers. I want to just remind everyone that on our website, effective today, we have updated our bill calculator, so that individual customers can go on our website and find out what the actual proposed rate increase means to them individually. So I encourage customers to check that out on the website. And before, I think it's also appropriate to talk a little bit, you know, whenever we talk about changes in rate structure or increases, proposed increases in revenue, it's good to talk about, you know, what have we been doing to control costs? So I want to talk about that a little bit. Over the last 10, about 10 years ago, the district had a full-time equivalent staff of 58 employees. We have been running at about 54 now for many years since then, so we're down about 7 percent, have been holding that line. Some other things that we've done, even if withholding our staff at 54, we've done a major expansion in our recycled water, teaming up with Nevada Sanitary District and Los Galinas. They produce the recycled water, we store it and distribute it to our customers. Over the last five or so years, we've added 17 miles of pipe on recycled water, for recycled water distribution, two water storage tanks, and we've gone from two customers to 90 customers. So the recycled water system currently, right now, equates to about one-third the production capacity of our Stafford Treatment Plant. So it's really starting to become, you know, another strong backbone to our local water supply and obviously a drought-proof local water supply. And we've done that without adding any additional staff. Some other things that we've done within the last, about in 2015, we completed an upsize of our North Burn Aqueduct. We have a seven-mile aqueduct that we use to get water from Sonoma County Water Agency, our wholesaler, and have it delivered to us. Five miles of that seven-mile aqueduct, so about 80 percent, or 70 percent of that pipeline was upsized. And with that project, it was a total $22 million project, 18 million of that, or over 80 percent was funded by Caltrans and we're a municipal water district. So we were able to do a significant leveraging of those costs to other financial supporters of that project. And that project not only then gave us five miles of brand-new steel pipe that had been 60 years old, but it also was larger diameter, allowed us to eliminate the need for a 400-horsepower pump at the Castania Pump Station, thereby eliminating that electrical cost associated with that pump station operation. Couple other things, cost control is on the recycled water project, about one-third of that was funded with federal and state grants, to the tune of a little bit more than $10 million. On our other capital improvement projects, including not only recycled water, but other CIP projects, we've been successful in getting low-interest rate loans that have lowered the overall financing cost of the projects. Some of those loans have been as low as 1 percent. And then finally, before closing here, I just want to talk pension costs, are something that comes up quite a bit. So I just want to mention, just in the 2017 grand jury report on pension costs, North Burn Water District was 39 percent below the average of all public agencies in Marin County, and 20 percent below the average of the special utility districts. And then another thing that we read about are retiring medical costs, otherwise known as other post-employment benefits. I just also want to point out that the district has been successful in changing eligibility rules for new employees from 12 years of service to 20 years of service, and that was effective in 2018. So I thought it was important to, again, just summarize that, you know, we are trying to do as much as we can to control the costs, but you'll see here in the presentation by Mark Hildebrand, that there are other drivers that necessitate the proposed revenue increases that you'll hear about tonight, as well as rate revenue structure. So with that, if there aren't any questions, I'll go ahead and have Mark come up for the presentation. I would like to, I think Mark's presentation is about a half an hour. If you can just, we'll have plenty of time for questions, but if you can allow Mark to initially just go through the presentation, and then we can go back to any areas with the Q and As after that, so.
Great. Well, thank you for the introduction, and I will give this presentation, I'll sort of circle around this. The presentation that we gave, or that we're going to give, is going to cover both water within the Nevada service area and recycled water. The agenda, as we go through this presentation, the first thing I'm going to cover is just rate studies in general, what we do when we do a rate study. And then we're going to specifically look at financial plans for the two different enterprises. So we treat the Nevada potable water as a separate enterprise from the recycled water enterprise, and we'll talk about the financial plans for both those enterprises independently, independent from each other. And then we'll, once we have talked about those financial plans, then we'll talk about structural changes that we're proposing for the rates that are currently in place, and we'll wrap up with project schedule. So the rate-setting process in general follows three steps. These are the three steps that are followed for both water and wastewater utility rate studies. You start with a revenue requirement, which is the same thing as a financial plan. What you're doing here is that you're looking at all the revenue that's coming into the enterprise and all the money that's going out. The money coming in is predominantly rate revenue, but there's other miscellaneous fees that we'll talk about. And the money going out will be your operating costs, your capital costs, and your debt service. Those are the three principal costs that we'll talk about. And what we do is we look at that balance, understand how the reserves look, whether there's enough rate revenue coming in or not, and based on that analysis, we'll make recommendations on how much rate revenue needs to increase. We'll also look at your debt and whether there's opportunities to debt-finance additional capital projects, whether that makes sense in the long term for the ratepayers. And generally, just find a strategy that helps to minimize rate increases to the customers is the real goal for that revenue requirements step. Once we understand how much total rate revenue is needed within the utility, the enterprise, we go to cost of service. And cost of service is sort of the cornerstone of Proposition 218, which is what Drew mentioned earlier. Proposition 218 is essentially the California state law that speaks to how rates can be charged to public utility customers. And the idea here is that you can't ever charge more than the cost of providing service. The rates have to be proportionate to the cost of providing service. And so once we understand how much rate revenue is required, we then look at the different customers, how they behave, whether it's a commercial-type customer or a residential, when they use water, how they use water, and allocate costs to them based on the way that they drive costs within the utility. Once we understand how we want to collect costs from the different customer classes, then we go to rate design, which is how are you going to collect that revenue? Is it going to be through fixed charges? Is it going to be through variable charges, based on how much water is used? Are there going to be tiered rates? Those types of decisions. So once we understand how much revenue we need, we decide how to collect that. And again, those rate design decisions have to be within the parameters of the cost of providing service. So as we entered this project, one of the objectives, either the framework we worked within and the objectives we had, we were first looking for opportunities to potentially improve the existing rate structure, but generally retaining the same basic structure. We weren't entering the project with the idea that we were going to make changes for the sake of changing the rates. But we did want to try to make it a little bit simpler and easier to understand and make sure that all the components were within the industry standards for how utilities charge for water service. We, as I mentioned earlier, we did treat potable water and recycled water as separate enterprises, so we'll be talking about that as separate financial plans. And then really importantly, we wanted to ensure equity between your rate, between the ratepayers, because that's really, as I mentioned, the cornerstone of Proposition 218. And it's very important that the report and that the entire study really demonstrate that all ratepayers are being treated fairly and that they're being treated based on the cost of providing service and not based on a desired outcome. And the reason I'm emphasizing this is because historically, decades ago, rate studies often were done with the district or a city's policies in mind. They were, you know, they were trying to achieve certain outcomes, whether that was conservation, affordability, or revenue stability. And recent case law has really made it very clear in the last 10 years that a lot of those policies, while there are opportunities to try to help advance some of those objectives that districts may have, predominantly, you have to follow this principle of cost of service. And so that's what we did. So first, I'm going to jump into the Nevada Potable Water Financial Plan, and we start with reserves. So this is essentially how much money we have in cash within the different funds. I'm not going to spend too much time on every single number here, because we do have limited time and you do have this presentation available to you. But essentially, there is about $10.5 million in unrestricted cash that can be used. And each one of these funds, we'll talk about them and how the level of these funds has been, the target levels for each of these funds, we'll talk about that in a moment. But essentially, there's about $10.5 million in cash that can be used by the district, much of which needs to be held as a reserve. In terms of revenue, the big, the vast majority of the revenue, almost 90 percent, comes from the rate revenue that's charged to customers. There are connection fee revenues. Connection fees are revenues that come from developers for new housing, new projects that go in. That's a very volatile source of revenue, because a big development comes in or nothing gets built in a certain year, that percentage can increase and decrease significantly. There's also wholesale rate revenue from selling some of your water supply to other agencies and other non-rate revenues, which are miscellaneous fees, turn-on, turn-off, other services that are provided by the district. All told, there's almost $22 million in revenue for, that was budgeted for the current fiscal year. It is interesting to note, something that is often misunderstood about the utility costs and water bills in general, is how much you're paying for your water. And if you look at the total amount of revenue that was collected from customers and the total amount of water that was sold, 2.4 billion gallons, that comes out to less than a penny per gallon of water served to customers. And it's just an interesting contrast, if you go and you buy not even a gallon of water from the store, it's going to cost you a buck or two or three, depending on whether you like Fiji or Arrowhead. But yeah, it's really inexpensive water, and it's very high-quality water, usually comparable to what you can buy off the shelf. On the other side, you look at your operating expenses and debt service. So this doesn't include capital expenses, which are large capital projects, but debt service is a form of capital, since it's paying for past capital projects. But all told, that's about $21 million. So I'll just, you know, really quickly, just if you're thinking in your math, in your head, that this is $22 million, and this is $21 million, again, this does not include capital spending, which is an important part of what the district has to spend to support the utility. But the largest line item here is resource supply. This is water purchased from the county. There's an aqueduct that brings down water, and that's purchased by the district and served. There's also, the other source of water is the Stafford Lake, and that requires treatment, which is the other $2.5 million, another large expense of treating that water. And then the transmission and distribution system are all the pipes, the pumping, et cetera, that goes to delivering the water. Here's the capital spending for the district, for the Nevada enterprise. I showed a couple of past years here, fiscal '16, '17, '18, and '19, just to show the historical capital spending. The red there shows capital spending that was grant-funded, so it was not paid for by ratepayers. The green was debt-funded. And you can see going forward that the average capital spending is increasing. In particular, the light green, which is your cash-funded capital, is increasing significantly. A lot of those green projects are repair and replacement projects that are helping to shore up aging infrastructure. We'll talk about that in a moment. So here's a more detailed look at the types of projects that that graph was showing. So about seven, almost $7 million will be used to replace aging pipelines. So a lot of the pipes in your system are pretty old. There are some pipes out there that are over 60 years old, that are past their expected useful life and are heavily corroded and need to be replaced. You do have a prevention, preventative maintenance program, and this helps detect problems before they occur. It's a lot cheaper to work with a pipe that's still intact that needs to be replaced than to do an emergency repair on a pipe that's ruptured. It's much less expensive as well, and so that preventative maintenance is a very cost-effective way of managing the system. The administrative building, this building here, is also aging and needs to be upgraded and replaced, and that includes a laboratory facility that needs to be replaced. The Stafford Treatment Plant has some standard maintenance, and then there's also some tanks that need to be built and rehabilitated, and pump stations. So the big pieces that we just talked about, obviously, the big line item is the administrative building. It is reaching the end of its useful life. There's problems with the disability access to the building. It includes that laboratory facility that I mentioned. And we're also looking at historically low interest rates in terms of going out for debt to be able to pay for the project. There's, it's not going to stay this way forever, but there are extremely low interest rates, below 3 percent interest, which is a really good deal for ratepayers if you can, if you're going to have to replace the building soon anyways, now's a good time to take advantage of those low interest rates. As I mentioned, some of the pipelines are actually over 70 years old, and it really is less expensive to proactively address system deficiencies than, again, to wait for a rupture. Whenever a pipe ruptures, it's tens of thousands of dollars to go in there and throw a Band-Aid on it, and it really doesn't improve the system at all. So if you can address those deficiencies before they fail, it's much more cost-effective to everybody involved. And then there are, there's an initiative to improve the fire flow of the system, to increase the resilience of the system. I think that fire events are something that's on the front of everyone's mind, and so the district's being proactive and making sure that the entire system is capable of addressing any fire events that may occur. Let's switch gears here a little bit. I mentioned earlier, we looked at the funds and where they are currently. This is describing the reserve targets that we have. There are three targets, there's three reserves on the right there. There's the operating reserve, the target's 5.6 million, that's three months of, sorry, four months of operating costs, which is a standard target for utilities to make sure that you have money in the bank in the event that there's significant changes in the cost of operating, changes in chemical costs, electrical costs, other unexpected changes to your budget. The OPEB, or the other post-employment benefit, that's a liability for paying for retired employees, and that $4.4 million target was set by an actuarial, actuary study. And so that's a, determined from a third party, that's the appropriate amount to have in that reserve. The liability contingency reserve was also an analysis done by an outside consultant on potential liabilities that face the agents, the districts, and the operations that they serve. And so in terms of liabilities, it's good to have that money set aside. So those are, those three add up to your minimum reserves, what we're calling the minimum reserve, which is to say that when you do a financial plan, you never want to plan to have less than what is targeted. It may come to pass that you'll have less because something unexpected happens, but when you're planning for the future, you never want to plan to have less than these targets. You always want to plan to have more. So that's why we're calling them your minimum reserves. Your target reserves is a different type of reserve. A target reserve, which is your maintenance accrual fund, is, the purpose of that reserve is to absorb the volatility that's natural to your capital program. I showed the slide earlier, where it shows the capital spending really goes through peaks and valleys. And so the whole purpose of that $4 million reserve is to be able to fund the peaks when they happen, and then to build up the reserve during the valleys when there's less, below-average capital spending. So that type of reserve, you are supposed to draw down on it and build it up over time. And what that allows you to do is to avoid rate spikes when you're, when you have no money in the bank and you need to pay for an expensive capital project. So this is really to help stabilize the revenue that you need from your customers. This graph here is a financial forecast for the entire district that, or for the Nevada enterprise. It has a lot of information on it that I'm going to explain. So we have two different graphs here. The one on the top is showing your, this, the columns are the expenses. So what you have in the purple here is your operating costs. The red are transfers out to different, to other enterprises. The hashed blue here is your debt expense, and the light blue is the cash capital. In the background, what you have is your revenue. So the dark green is your non-rate revenue, and the light green is your rate revenue. And so the way to read this is anytime the columns are higher than the background green, you're spending more than you're collecting. And down here, what we have is your fund balance. So right now, there's about just over $10 million. And the point of this graph is to show what would happen if no rate increases happened at all. This is showing zero rate increases, and we'll talk about that coverage ratio in a moment here. But if you were not to raise rates at all, every single year, your expenses would be higher than your revenues, and you would be, you would have negative cash extreme. And this obviously isn't a sustainable or recommendable scenario, but we just want to show it first to demonstrate the need for the rate increases and to sort of give a backdrop to the rate increases that are going to be proposed. So this is the recommended, these are the recommended rate increases. It's 6 percent, 6 percent, 6 percent, 5, 5. So we're recommending five years as the general timeframe that we look at. Beyond five years, the projections start getting too fuzzy, and we don't, we're not comfortable with recommending rates that far out. And the board may decide to only adopt one or two or three years. That's a decision that they have yet to make. But in terms of the study goes, we were prepared to stand behind these five rate increases, which is the total rate revenue that you're collecting from your customers. As you can see, right now, you're at your minimum reserves at about $12 million, and your target reserves are represented by the dashed line. So over the course of the study, by about 2026, 2027, you'll be up So over the course of the study, by about 2026, 2027, you'll be up at your target reserves, slowly building up your reserve to get up to that target. And again, you can see the revenue slightly surpassed, as you're building your reserves, the revenues are going to be greater than your expenses in certain years. The debt coverage ratio is a number that measures how easily a district can pay for its debt. So essentially, a 1.0 debt coverage ratio means that you're able to pay for your operating costs and your debt obligations down to the last dollar. With your last dollar, you can successfully pay for your debt and you have no more money left over for paying for capital projects. Generally speaking, when you have debt, there'll be a covenants, there'll be requirements within that debt that will require you to maintain at least a 1.2 is sort of the standard. It depends on where you, who you get the debt from. But 1.2 is the minimum requirement usually by these contracts. The rating agencies, however, the agencies that will say whether you're A or A+ or B- minus in terms of your credit are looking for 1.5. That's, they're going to give cheaper, you're going to receive cheaper money and you're going to qualify for cheaper loans if you have a higher debt coverage ratio. So for that reason, we are recommending that you maintain at least a 1.5 debt coverage ratio. But these numbers obviously go up to 2.0, and this is not what's driving the rate increases. What's driving the rate increases is trying to build back up to the reserve targets here in the out years. Okay? So that, that's the, actually, I, so we wanted to talk about, so what's driving these rate In looking, you know, sometimes, we do forensics as we do this. We're saying, what led to the situation that we're in? Why do we need 6% rate increases at this point in time? We look backwards and we did notice that the operating costs for the district have increased by 3.6 million, or sorry, 3.6% over the past four years. A lot of that's being driven by the cost of, the source of supply costs from Sonoma County. Their, the water rates, which was $6 million a year for the district, are increasing in general by 5% or 6% per year. And that's a really big part of why these costs have gone up by this much. Going forward, we're going to assume that all your other costs, all the other operating costs in general will increase by about 3%, which is about inflation. But water purchase costs, the county has indicated, which is 30% of your operating budget, will continue to increase by 6%. So that's something, that's a forecast that the county has provided. And so we built that into our forecast as well. As I mentioned, looking at the capital spending, the pay-go, so the cash capital is going to increase from, historically, it's been about $2.5 million per year. It's going to increase to about $4 million per year. And the debt service for the projects that I mentioned, for the, for the building, will be about $1.1 million, or the total debt service, no, I'm sorry, it will increase by $1.1 million in 2021 when you issue the debt for the new building. So unless these rate increases happen, you'll, we'll experience the previous slide, the slide where you'll see your reserves dropping precipitously. You won't be meeting your debt coverage requirements down here. As I mentioned, it has to be at least 1.2, and you can see it dropping below 1. At that point, you'll be in default of existing debt obligations, which is terrible for your credit rating, and it will be hard to recover from. And the district will be unable to fund needed upgrades and replacement projects, which could impact water quality. So that's the Novato Potable Water Recycled Plan. As I go through the recycled water plan, I'll go a little bit faster because a lot of these concepts will be familiar to you now that I've presented the Novato Potable. So the reserves on the recycled water side are about $400,000. It's a significantly smaller operation, so that's an appropriate amount of reserves. The revenue, the revenue for the recycled water program's a little different. A lot of the revenue comes from water users, but a significant amount of the revenue to the enterprise is a transfer from Novato, which is essentially connection fee revenue, which is, that connection fee revenue coming from developers being used to pay for expansion of the water supply system. So the recycled water is part of the district's water supply. And so the connection fee revenue is being used to help reimburse the recycled water program for debt that was issued in order to build the infrastructure that currently exists to serve existing customers. So that's why there's that transfer happening. That's really just connection fee revenue that's coming into the, to the recycled water enterprise. On the expense side, you can see most of the expense is trying to pay back the debt service on building the system. You know, building a brand-new recycled water infrastructure is extremely expensive. It's a lot of pipes for not a lot of customers. The types of customers are really big water users, and so they do use a tremendous amount of water. But that length of pipe is, you've still got to go miles to get the pipe to them. And so just by efficiencies of scale, it's a tough, it's a tough industry, infrastructure to build, but it's a great way to reuse your water and it's a great way to manage your water. It's certainly less expensive than trying to go out and buy new water rights from a different source. The capital spending, here's, here's the, basically the building of the system right here for the past three years, largely grant-funded by outside sources, largely debt finance as well. And going forward, it's really just $100,000 per year for standard maintenance expenses, rehabilitation. The reserves, there's two different reserves. One is the operating reserve, same idea, four months, which is about $175,000. That's the target for the operating reserve. And then the capital reserve is based on, it's equal to the annual depreciation of the, of the utility. So again, same idea where it's supporting the volatility of the capital spending and it provides emergency funds in the event of asset failure. So here is the picture for the recycled water. We're proposing exactly the same rate increases as for Novato Potable Water. So 6% per year for three years and then 5%. You can see that the revenues and the expenses match exactly and that it's a very stable, even fund balance here. And this is because of the dynamic of that transfer in from Novato and the use of connection fee revenue to pay for the expenses. So really, that transfer is being calibrated in terms of the need, the debt service requirements within the recycled water enterprise. So that concludes the financial plans, one for Novato, the other for recycled water. Both have the same proposed rate revenue increases. Now I'm going to switch gears and talk about cost of service, so, and the rate design. So the existing rates that you have, that the district has in place, there's a water usage, it's called a quantity rate, which is based on how much water is used. And then there's a fixed charge on your bill that's charged based on the size of the meter. And then there's a few other miscellaneous charges. The quantity rate is a tiered structure for residential. And so the first units of water are less expensive than tier two and tier three, depending on how much water you use. Commercial has the same idea. They have tiered rates as well, but in, for commercial, the weight structure is that it's seasonal. So during the summer, the water's more expensive than it is during the winter. There's a raw water rate for, for a couple really large customers. There's the recycled water rates. There's an elevation surcharge for customers who live up the hill for the extra cost of pumping the water up the hill. And then there is a drought surcharge, which wasn't looked at during this study, but it's a surcharge that will kick in in the event of a drought declared by the state. So the, the entire premise of what's being proposed here, so there's a pretty significant change to the structure of the rates that's being proposed by this study. And this slide captures the essence of what's being proposed, which is to point out that about a quarter of the water that is used by the district comes from the Stafford Lake is treated. And about three-quarters of it is purchased from Sonoma County Water Agency. The Sonoma County Water Agency water is significantly cheaper by about 20%. It's 20%, it's 20% cheaper than the local treated water. And I know that's counterintuitive, but it's part of its efficiencies of scale and part of it is simply that the source of supply for the county has comes from a source that's perhaps easier to treat. So the dollars per acre foot for county purchases is about $2,700 per acre foot. An acre foot is about 325,000 gallons of water. It's an acre of land filled with one foot of water. And the Stafford water costs $3,200 per acre foot. So this is a really important thing to keep in mind as we talk about it because the prices that we're going to be proposing for tier one are going to be based on the cheaper source of water. And the prices for tier two and three are going to be based on the more expensive source of water. The other thing is that the allocation is going to be based on how much water you have. So we're going to try to, we're going to recover 75% of your water that's sold is going to be sold in tier one or at winter rates. And 25% of the water, which is the 25%, which is more expensive, is going to be sold at tier two or three or during, or with summer rates. So that's the, the allocation, so the tier allocation, how much you receive in tier one is not just a haphazard number that's been invented. We calculated that number based on current water usage so that you will effectively, the district will sell 75% of its water at tier one rates. Here's another way to look at it. So you have tier one, this is the water that's going to be sold in tier one. The amount in tier one is going to be about, it's about 74% of the water sold is going to be in tier one because it's 74% of your water supply. And the cost is going to be proportionate to the cost of purchasing water from Sonoma County. Tier two and three will be based on the costs of Stafford water. So the amount of water sold in tiers two and three will be the amount of water produced by the lake, from the lake. Tier three is five, the last 5% of your water is going to be sold in tier three, and it's going to include the cost of the district's conservation program. So the idea here is that customers who are using, the most wasteful customers or the customers who are using the most amount of water are the ones who are driving the need for a conservation program, so they should be the ones to pay or to fund those, those costs. Elevation charge, so the elevation zone charge, as I mentioned, there's three different zones. There's zone A, B, and C. There's essentially a surcharge for those customers who are on zone B and C. Water is extremely heavy. I don't know if you've ever tried to carry a five-gallon bucket 100 yards, but it's really heavy stuff. And so lifting it up several hundred feet up a hill takes a tremendous amount of electricity and expensive infrastructure, pump stations and whatnot. And so I'm not going to get into too much, too much of the details of all these numbers. It can be found in the report, which will be made available. But the idea behind the math here is that we're looking at the average elevation of zone A, B, and C. We recognize that there is pumping that does occur even at the lowest levels because it has to be pumped out of the lake and brought to an average elevation of about 40 feet. So there are some costs with this pumping, but there's significantly more costs for pumping up to B and C. And so we looked at the average elevation and we calculated the cost per gallon based on known costs from previous studies that were done that really, that looked at electricity, infrastructure, labor, everything associated with all the pumps and the pump stations and whatnot. And so the current charge is a 73 cent surcharge for zone B and a $2.01 surcharge for zone C. We're proposing essentially the same thing, 76 cents and $2.10. So there's not much of a change that's happening in terms of the elevation zone, zone charge. The total cost, by the way, for pumping is just over $2 million. Now the, another pretty dramatic change to the rates that are being proposed is the meter equivalency schedule. So the meter equivalency schedule is the way that we decide how much is going to be charged to a one-inch meter versus a two-inch meter versus a six-inch meter. And the industry standard for doing this is by looking at how much water can pass through these meters. So each of these types of meters have a rating in gallons per minute. So the smallest types of meters can pass about 20 gallons per minute and the very largest ones can pass significantly more. So the, these schedules are produced by AWWA, the American Water Works Association. They're, they're standard schedules that describe how the cost or the, how much cost should be allocated from one meter size to the next. And it's really just based on this flow. If you look at what's being proposed, which again is based on a standard schedule, the smallest is a one and the largest is 65. If you look at the existing equivalency schedule, the smallest is a one and the largest is 37. So this is a, for larger meters, the bottom line here is that larger meters are going to see a larger rate increase than your smallest meters. And that's simply because we are adopting a standard equivalency schedule here. We're, and we're, we're just taking a different course and adopting this, this standard here. You're going to see, as we go through the bill impacts, you're going to see larger meter customers tend to have higher rate increases. Even though we're proposing 6% rate increases to customers as a whole, because of these structural changes that we're proposing, the tier allocations, the tier costs, the meter equivalency schedule, every customer is going to experience a different percent increase to their bill. The 6% is just the overall average. Another thing that's changing with these proposed changes is that the amount that, of revenue that's being collected through fixed revenue is going, is increasing from 24% of the district's revenue is currently at, is currently fixed and it's going up to 27%. So a modest increase, which is going to help the district with revenue stability. And since it's a, it has, has to add up to 100%, the variable revenue is going to decrease from 76 down to 74, or sorry, 73. Raw water is currently all variable revenue because those customers pay for their own infrastructure. They're really just paying for the commodity cost of the water. And recycled water is also increasing a bit from 5%, 5% to 7%. The reason that these percentages are so different between potable water and recycled water is because recycled water uses so much water. As I mentioned, there's not a whole lot of customers, but they're putting a tremendous amount of water through the pipes that they have. And so they, you end up just collecting a lot more revenue from them through this variable revenue, which makes their fixed revenue look small by comparison. Tier sizing, so we mentioned the change in the tiers to reflect the amount of water that's being purchased from the county and how much is being collected from the, or taken from the lake. So currently, tier one goes to 650 gallons per day. And I don't know how many of you know somebody who uses 650 gallons of water per day, but that's a lot of water. It's a tremendous amount of water. And so effectively, what's happening is that almost all of your water, almost all of your revenue is being sold in tier one currently. What's being proposed is that it be decreased to 262, which will result in a lot less of your water being, or a lot less of your revenue coming from tier one, a lot more coming from tier two and three. What's important to keep in mind here is that the number, the 262, again, this isn't a policy that the district has. They don't want to somehow collect more from tier two and tier three because of an objective that they have. This is really based on the cost of providing service. This represents the cost of the Sonoma County water and this represents the cost of the, of the Stafford Lake water. So this slide has a lot of numbers, but there's a lot of rates. And so this is the only way that we figured to get all these numbers in one spot. I'll use this more as a reference point that you can look at when, if you get the presentation, if you download the presentation or you get a copy of it. The next few slides are going to do a better job of comparing numbers and how the bills will impact folks. But the, the idea here is that we're comparing the commercial summer and winter rates. There's zone A, B, and C for the different elevations. So here's the, these are the, the first column are the proposed rates. The second column are the current rates, and this shows the percent changes between them. So just to isolate residential zone A, since that's your most common customer, the current tier one is 542. The proposed tier one is 550, so it's only going up by eight cents or 1%. However, tier two is decreasing by 28% and tier three is decreasing by 49%. However, Tier Two is decreasing by 28% and Tier Three is decreasing by 49%. And that may seem, that may seem counterintuitive that we're raising rates, but remember, the allocation has dropped significantly. So, while you pay less in Tier Two and Three, you're going to end up in Tier Two and Three a lot sooner. And so, there's going to be a lot more customers paying that rate. And so, that's just the way that the math works out. I should point out that in terms of the summer rates, it's going to be July, August, and September. It turns out that the water usage from these three months equals about 25%, as I mentioned, of the water usage. And so, that's the, as I mentioned, 25% of your, about a quarter of your water comes from the lake. Currently, it's June, July, August, September, October. Again, the reason it's being changed to these three months isn't for any particular policy other than that is the height of summer water use during these three months. And it also adds up to the 25% of water that's produced by the lake. So, this is going to show some examples of bill impacts, so some real examples of how people are going to be affected. So, if we take your most common, so 56% of all your accounts are 5/8 inch, single-family homes. And so, we're looking at three examples. We're looking at a low water usage is 8,000 gallons over the course of two months. The median is about 14,000 gallons for every two months and high is 50. So, you can see the low water users, their rate's going to increase by about 10%. The median's going to increase by 7.7%. And the high water user is going to increase by 32%. You have other sized customers, one inch fire and one inch, so a one inch fire customer is a customer who has a one inch meter, but the only reason that they don't have a 5/8 inch meter is because a fire code has required them. So, they essentially have been upsized. Their meter has been upsized for fire reasons and not for water demand reasons. And so, these customers are now going to be charged the same as 5/8 inch customers because they're essentially behaving the same way as the smaller meter customers. They just happen to be in a place and they happen to develop their house or build their house at a time when fire code required them to upsize it. So, that's why they are going to be seeing a slightly lower increase in their rates. And then, you can see the one inch meter goes up by, the lowest water user goes up by 6% than 8%. The multifamily customers are going to be hit less hard just because of the size of their meters and the way that they use water. They'll see a below, generally see a below-average rate increase, 3% for four-unit complex that uses an average amount of water, 2.6% for a one inch. So, we extracted, you know, different examples here to sort of try to show you how different types of customers will be affected because there's a lot of numbers. And this is probably the easiest numbers to wrap your head around just in terms of what these rate, these bills are going to look like. This is all for year one. So, year one is the year where all these structural changes will happen. In years two, three, four, and five, everybody's rates will go up by the exact same percent. So, the 6% or the 5% later on. So, these big variations in how people will be affected is only effective for the very first year where in these structural changes take place. Then after that point, everybody's rates will go up in lockstep at 6% and then 5%. But just to point out this box here, that a typical, single-family homes bill, their monthly bill will go up by just over $4 with this year-one rate increase. Looking at commercial, the rates will, it depends on, so I have a summer month and winter month. Here during the summer, their rates will go up by generally over 20%. Largely, these, these larger percentages are largely driven by those larger meter sizes that we talked about, how the, the larger meters are going to be hit a bit harder. And it's also because they are going to be paying a higher, their summer rates are higher. If you go back to this slide, you'll notice that the summer rates right now are 776, or 767. And it's going up to 642. Sorry, it's currently 642 and it's going up to 767, which is why a lot of them are experiencing a higher than, a higher percent increase than residential. Winter is not as much. So, in fact, some are even going down in the winter because of the rates being charged. Here's a survey of a number of agencies up and down the 101 corridor. You can see that you're currently in the middle. And even with the first 6% rate increase, you'll continue to be right in the middle. You can see there are some agencies that charge significantly more. This is a typical bill for median water use for a single-family home. We also looked at fire connection charges. This is sort of a, doesn't apply to a lot of customers. There's 427 service lines. The cost is associated with fire connections. This, this has nothing to do with the cost of providing fire protection or any of the, of the costs associated with the capacity of the system. This is really just, the district is required to maintain the pipe from the pipeline all the way to the valve. So, actually, on the customer's property, there's infrastructure, there's pipes, and there's meters that the district has to maintain. They actually have to physically go there and maintain it, which is not a service that is provided to other types of connections. And so, this simply captures the $155,000 of maintenance costs that the district encourages every year to go out there and to, to make sure that all that infrastructure is taken care of. And it's a service that other customers don't receive, and so, we break it out as a separate cost. And that concludes my presentation. I'm sorry, I think I went over my 30 minutes, but I felt like all of that was important to say. There's some dates up here that Drew mentioned earlier, and I'll kick it back to you.
Thank you, board. Again, just before I turn it back to the board, I want to highlight some of these future dates. You know, the, the board will be considering acceptance of the final rate study at the March 3 meeting. And then, that's where they, when they would give direction to staff on how to move forward with our Prop 218 notification. And that would be a direct mailing to all of our customers as far as the proposed rate increase and identifying, again, the rate structure change. And then, that would come to the board again at the June 16th for public hearing to enact the new water revenue and water rate changes. So, with that, I'll go ahead and turn it back to the board for any questions that the board has and then with the public as well.
Are there any questions on the board? We'll have ample time going forward to review it additionally. I thought we might ask members of the public if they have questions, input, issues they'd like to address here. There'll be plenty of other opportunity as well. This is the point of the meeting tonight, to solicit input from our customers and the people that really own us because we are a nonprofit public utility.
So, my name is Jean Mariani. I'm on the Nevada Sanitary District Board. Some of my previous lives, I've actually done water rate studies. We did, I did the tier grades at East Bay. I almost got launched in Lafayette. Very interesting evening. But I just wanted to comment that I think you did an amazing job. It's really, really good. I love the way you changed things to be more reflective of the source of water and also to look at the usage patterns across the district. So, I just wanted to say, you have, this is a really good consultant. I think you should be pretty happy with what he's given you because these are really, really hard things to do. I can see where there's going to be issues, but I think that your reasoning is very sound. And so, it should be simpler to justify what you want to do going forward because you have really good data and analysis behind it. So, I just wanted to make that comment. I'm going to go home because I didn't bring any coffee. I'm going to start coughing. But I just wanted to make sure that I got some input in tonight. So, thank you for the presentation. It was really, really well done.
Appreciate it, Jean, very much.
Different aspect of this presentation. And I'm glad you, a few minutes ago, brought up the issue of the larger, the, the use of larger meters, not just for people who use more water, but more specifically, as in my case and a few others, who either chose to or required by the fire department to put in sprinklers. You know, that's, that's a hit. But I mean, it pays off in time in terms of a lower insurance. But then finding it seemed to be more painful to, that you, in addition to the cost of the sprinklers and the, also putting a larger meter, paying for that. And then, at least at one point in time before things were changed, that you weren't going to be a larger water user. It's just there is the potential to serve the sprinklers, whether or not they were needed. So, I'm glad you made that, that distinction. I'm not sure how many people have faced that question.
Sure. And there were some other specific meters that we looked at that were for fire protection that were being charged for, as though they were regular water users. And we made sure that we identified those to, you know, some, some eight-inch meters that shouldn't be treated as other normal customers. They really just don't stand by.
Right. Thank you very much.
So, all of this data is available. We want to be as transparent, as clear to our owners as possible. It is all on the webs, on the webpage. You're welcome to peruse it as much as you want and would welcome it. I mean, I was an investment banker for my business, for my profession. I'm used to going through hundreds of pages of these intense numerical presentations, which is not true for most people. So, my absorbency of numbers is high. But this is complex. It has a lot of moving parts. And that's why we want to give a lot of time and a lot of attention so that people understand these rates. This is people's money that we're supplying a great, reliable, reasonably-priced, safe product in return for rates. But it's important that our owners, our 16,000-plus customers that we serve with pride and who own us basically, that they understand what we're doing and why we're doing what we're doing. So, that's the purpose for these meetings.
Can I type on? Is that, you okay? I don't want to speak out of line. So, I, at Drew's, good grace, he, he sent me the link to the, to the study and I don't know Mr. Hildebrand, but he did a fine job. He really--
Chris DiGabriel, 44 Montevista, Nevada, and former general manager of the water district. So, the methodology is really clear and it's straightforward, but it's a different approach. And so, it's a couple of things I'd like you to think about. And I'm going to go to the board.
One of the slides talked about the tier threshold. So, currently, what's proposed is a tier threshold, zero to 262 gallons per day. And then, 263 to, is it seven?
Or 20.
Pardon? Seven twenty?
Seven twenty.
Seven twenty? Okay. And then, greater than seven twenty. Okay. So, the old tiers were zero to, I think you said 650. I had 615 in my mind, but that's, that's good. 651 to, is it 1,800?
Eighteen forty-five.
Eighteen forty-five. And then, greater than eighteen forty-five. So, so I think it's important to remember what, how we got there and then to think about how you go from that to that. Because, you know, most of the customers, rightly so, your pie chart showed, they're in Tier One. So, there's an awful lot that aren't going to be in Tier One anymore enacting the new rate structure. So, important to remember how we got to that point. And that was, and Doug Cody, legal counsel, will confirm that this was an appropriate way to go about it, no less appropriate than what Mr. Hildebrand proposes, but different. So, so you had all these customers who use water, and, and this was the, the water use and then the number of, number of, of customers. Okay. So, it's a bell curve. So, most, most people are following this area. And the median, all right, was this 650, which corresponded to the connection fee quantity when you buy into the system. When you buy into the system, you pay a connection fee and it corresponds to average-day-peak-month demand for a single-family home. So, that's how that, that number was determined. And I think it was an appropriate approach to do that. Now, the, that, the, the current tiers came about over time. I think the first one was 2005. We had the conservation incentive rate. Was that accurate? And then, maybe five years later, we had the conservation incentive tier rate because there's some customers out here that are just using an extraordinary amount of, of water and wanted to capture, you know, those that are using that, that extraordinary amount. So, I gave my comments to Drew and I just wanted to, that, that's one of the things, but I think it's an important thing for the board to consider, is how do you communicate? Because you're going to have a lot more people are now going to have, hey, I've never been in Tier Two before. I got the same postage stamp lot. I got the same amount of landscaping. So, just think about, well, how, how do you explain that? And I'm not, not suggesting that there's anything wrong with Mr. Hildebrand's analysis. I, I think it was very straightforward and easy to understand technically. But when you're, when you're Mary coming in saying, geez, my bill's got, I got Tier, Tier Two water use and I, I don't understand. The other thing I think is important is about that is that the upper tiers, tier units, dollars per unit go down. So, you got to be really careful about how you navigate that. One thing that I had never got around to sitting in Drew's chair was, but a very similar concept of the, for, for rate design was, you know, the fixed charge, on top of that is your least amount of water. On top of that is your next amount of water. And on top of that is your, your last amount of water. And that last amount of water is recycled water. So, one of your framework policies that you must have talked about was separating the potable enterprise and the recycled enterprise. So, think about that because it's all just another source of supply. They're all your customers. Yes, for exercising the state revolving fund loans, you need a separate account, but that's an accounting function. It's not a enterprise requirement, I don't believe. So, so, so think about, that's, that's another option in, in the grand scheme of things. Then, the final point that I wanted to bring up is, yep, Sonoma County Water Agency wholesale water is less expensive than Stafford water is today. Why is that? Because Stafford Treatment Plant was rehabilitated, reconstructed, and you have debt service. Sonoma County Water Agency wholesale rate has very little debt service that-- Sonoma County Water Agency wholesale rate has very little debt service that North Marin pays, and that's by design. Within the agreement, we have the ability to avoid paying debt and to pay cash, and for only a couple of instances have we participated in water agency debt. So when you look at those two elements, keep that in mind because once the debt for Stafford Treatment Plant is paid off, I think that's going to flip. So just a couple of things that I thought, and I apologize, Drew, if I spoke out of line, but I thought they were important for the board to hear.
Thank you, Chris. So the public is aware, there are three sources of our water for redundancy purposes. Sonoma County Water, we're about 13% of their volume. They're a wholesale organization. We have about 70 to 75% of our basic water is there, from there. And it comes to an aqueduct paralleling 101, okay? And it goes into tanks. So we don't get water, you don't get water at your house directly out of a pipe. You get it through a pipe from tanks. We have about 33 tanks, I believe, okay? They're very expensive. And this is an important point that I really want the public to understand, okay? As a nonprofit public utility, we have skinny margins. In other words, we have $140 million in net-depreciated historical assets, all right? And they're as old as I am. I'm exactly the same age as this district, April of 1948. Now, we've refurbished, rehabilitated, and replenished, but when you have a high asset base and low margin pay-go and structure, you have a debt creation event. So it takes, it's not like we're trying to generate a lot of profit here. We're just trying to generate a great product, which is what we do. And again, we have to have redundancy of supply. So the lake is about 25%, recycled water is about 70%, and can go to what level in the summer when the commercial users are doing it, Chris?
Drew, it can go up to 10%, 12%.
So that really helps the lake and helps the Sonoma County as well, just some input. And remember, we do fire protection as a public service. So the 2,800 hydrants that we're responsible for in the district of 100 square miles, all that is from us. All the water given to Nevada Fire to fight is free. We do not charge Nevada Fire for any water, whether they dip into the lake with a helicopter bucket. Fortunately, occasionally they do that, or whatever. That is us contributing, all 61,000 of us contributing to the fire district, right, Chris? Right, Drew?
Yes.
So there's a lot of things that this district does that isn't necessarily seen, and I think it's important that our owners understand that and know it.
I've got one quick question.
Go ahead, Noah.
One question, and that is, we have, I like to see the listing of the increases, either an average or a median, I'm not quite sure, of each of the high, the low, median, and high for the tier one and tier two, just to see what the average water charge is going to be on an increase. I think we might have that in all these numbers yet, but it's on a slide.
So if you're talking about just the bill, just the rates themselves, here are the three zones, and then we have the tier one, two, and three. So for zone A, the percent increases from tier two, one, two, and three is a 1% increase for tier one water, 28% decrease for tier two water, and a 49% decrease for tier three water. Is that, were those the numbers you looked for?
Yeah, I did that. And we've got a lot of numbers here. Not an investment banker.
You don't have to go to 32 again, too, just as far as if you explain that in the different brackets there.
Right. Off the top of my head, I mean, this low is clearly in tier one. I can't quite remember if the median crosses into tier two, but high definitely goes into tier three. I believe the median was tier two. But I know low stays in tier one and high goes into tier three, and I can't forget if median stays in tier one or if it goes into tier one or tier two, it just barely does, and you can see the percent increases there.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Sure. Very good presentation. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions before I bring it back to the board? All right. So how do we feel about, we will be offering another one of these presentations to the public on the 25th of February, if it's deemed requisite. And I think there'll be probably some press coverage in the interim, so I think people will start understanding the rate issues, and hopefully we'll offer another meeting if needed. Is that right, Drew?
Yeah. It's, we've got it scheduled, so it's at the board's pleasure as far as whether you want to go ahead and have that second workshop.
My question is, when do we start getting some responses in, do we have written responses to any of this yet that have come off of the website, or has anybody responded or commented on this?
We've got a handful of comments based from our, mainly from our communications through email. Someone sent out those 8,000 emails, we had some responses, but it was minimal and there was nothing. I could pull together what specifically came through and share that with the board in next week's meeting, but there wasn't anything significant that...
I'm just wondering whether there's a need for a second meeting. I mean, there will be another meeting when we take the action on...
There'll be another presentation on the March 3 meeting.
March 3, right.
And there is even time, if that March 3 meeting, things came up that if it needed to be carried over, it could be carried over to the second meeting in March. Really, the question is whether to have another dedicated workshop only, but this will be presented again at March 3, and so...
I like the idea of open and total transparency. It's complex. It's difficult with all the graphics for people to see it. Tonight is the very first time it's being presented to the public. I'd like to keep that meeting available.
Oh, yeah.
On the 25th, keep it scheduled, because if the IJ or other newspapers or the media and other people look at it, I'd welcome the chance for people to come and see what we proudly display, which is transparency, openness, and integrity. So I think that's important.
I agree. I think we ought to give the public as much chance as possible to get the information away, and if we have to do another meeting, that's fine with me.
Just curious, Julie, you said you haven't gotten a lot of comments yet. There would be more, I'm sure, but I suspect it won't be based on past experience, even though this is a very different approach than some things we've done in the past. But of what you have gotten so far, is that more from the commercial than residential customers? I do remember, and this may not be that germane to what we're doing right now, but I don't, maybe 10 years ago, maybe more, there was one particular commercial customer down in Golden Keys that really got hit, and I don't think it was because of a rate increase, it was a new player, and they use a lot of water, and they kind of were just, you know, really shocked, and they ended up having to pay.
Well, I think that the email that we sent out just basically said, you know, we're conducting this rate study workshop, and that you're invited, and the increase revenue requirement is 6%, and we've had mostly residential, just a little bit of feedback, but nothing really major, so...
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So I think, does the board agree that we'll keep open the February 25? Board and public meeting, special meeting for the public to see this again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. So it's unanimous. It's four. It's a four vote. So let me, before we move on, I'd like to ask our counsel, Doug Cody. Doug, would you like to say anything about Proposition 218 or why it's required? Anything you'd like to add into the presentation?
Well, I think your, Mr. Hildebrand did a good job in kind of giving you the basics of why Prop 218 came into place. I'll give you a little background on just when that came to be and when it was applied to water utility rates. And that was, it was passed in 1996 with the Right to Vote on Taxes Act. It was not applied to utilities until 2006 via a California Supreme Court decision that came from the high deserts down in Southern California. It was a case we always referred to as Big Horn case. Up until that point, as Mr. Hildebrand had said, water utilities had unfettered discretion in terms of developing their rates. But it was with that Big Horn decision where you now have to look very precisely at the actual cost of providing the service to each of your different customer classes. You don't have to look at each individual customer and custom-build a rate for each one, but it does require that you go through and you do this sort of analysis so that you can properly allocate those costs. And really what you see when you go for a while and structures don't change, and usually rate studies might be done every five to 10 years, five is getting to be more and more on industry standards, that those costs start to shift. And then you'll see these areas where when you then change the structure, you're getting changes more than what your revenue requirement would be. So as you go forward, after, assuming that in March you accepted this study and then put those rates into place later in the year, down the road, you won't see these kind of more dramatic structural changes because you'll be looking at this more frequently, and your changes, you'll be little tweaks here and there, but they'll be more closer in line to what you and your customer base are used to, which is kind of more programmatic changes, three, four, or 5% things along that line. Other than that, I think your consultants did a really great job in presenting what is a very complex thing. When you change structure along with adding in revenue, that is always very difficult to convey to your public because it's not just the typical, we're going to raise your rates 3%. People get that, they can calculate that, but you're changing a dynamic that may have been in place for a decade or more in terms of how those costs are allocated. And I think that makes it a difficult time in providing that information in a way that's understandable and digestible for people, but I know you've got a good team that you brought in that'll do with that, so I think you're on to a very good start.
Thank you, Doug. Martin Roche, who is Public Relations Consultant. Martin, would you like to say something regarding what's been...
I don't think anything that hasn't been said. I think it's incredibly complicated because of the multiple moving parts and so many different kinds of customers and usages. I think Mark did a great job. I think it's probably still mysterious to most people who aren't used to these kinds of numbers that are hard to deal with. And I think the important thing is you're trying to give your customers as much opportunity to understand and ask a question, or if they're concerned about something, to comment. So, you know, I applaud the district for making that effort.
Thank you, Martin. And again, as staff said, there is a great calculator available on our website for each of us customers to put in their individual situation so that they will see...
Their account number and the account name, and it will show you what your rates are today and what the proposed rates, what impact they'll have on your own individual account.
Great. Thank you, Julie. If there are...
I've just got one more request. Can we get kind of a summary of what some of the comments and things that are coming in before the next meeting sometime? Just to get an idea of what, you know, what we're looking at.
Yeah, definitely.
The other thing I just want to remind everyone is we will, we do hope to get the videotape of this presentation posted on our website by the end of this week so that it will further help our customers. It'll be on that same location on the web, on that dedicated page, that they can click on it and actually view the video if they weren't able to attend tonight.
Thank you, Drew. And Julie, thank you for the recap, Drew. That's great. Does any directors have any further comments? Before I thank Mark for spectacular consultancy, next week, next Tuesday on the 18th, the board will be having a regular board meeting to discuss the proposed rehabilitation of the building, okay, which, as you saw, has debt implications for our, for the financials. So that's next Tuesday at 6 o'clock. We will have a discussion of the building. I'd like to, on behalf of the board, thank Mark Hildebrand for truly in detail and spectacular presentation. Mark, thank you. You do us a great service. Having said that, with no further comments from staff or board, I'll close the meeting. Thank you all for coming.